Well, good morning. We're here for Marion County Board of Commissioners Weekly Board Meeting. We're in the Senate Hearing Room at 555 Court Street. It is Wednesday, August 8, 2018. And as always, if you will join us to start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By the way, it's the Senator Hearing Room.
Yes, that was the... The Senator Hearing Room, not the Senate Hearing Room. Yeah, you know what? My friends down in the Gold Building would probably appreciate the Senate Hearing Room. It's the old Senator Hotel is actually why we call this, because that's what was here before this building was built. So, we're first thing on the agenda today is public comment. We have one individual signed up, David Bean. And David, welcome. It's good to see you today.
Thank you. County Commissioners, I want to just approve for middle help services for Saturday and Sunday, because a lot of them don't have anywhere to go in emergency. So, I'm asking that the county get a drop-in center for Marion County for disability people in Marion County. A lot of them can't go in an emergency, so some of them have to walk, because they ain't getting no bus system for the hospital. A lot of them have to walk. So, I'm thinking if we have a workout on the middle health issues on that, policy on that, because we need to have a backup system there for them, for all the disability people in Marion County.
David, thank you. I know the crisis center's open 24/7, and I think the issue you brought up about transportation, I know with the legislature last year passed a new payroll tax that I believe we're all paying now out of our payroll, which will help...
January 1st.
Start January 1st, John? So, it'll be January 1st, and I have, even though we have no jurisdiction over the Salem-Kaiser Transportation District, which meets in this room, I believe what they're going to do with some of that extra money is they're planning on adding Saturday service, or at least attempting to add some weekend service.
But I was asking the county commissioners would have a system there, because a lot of them can't read and write, don't know where the hospitals are, don't know where all the services are, because a lot of them can't read and write. So, I'd like the county commissioners to look at that policy on that.
Okay, good. We'll do it, yeah.
Any questions?
Well, I'm trying to remember, and it shows I don't always pay attention. We had a meeting with Health Department Management Department Monday, and weren't we talking about how the county takes over and runs and provides that services for a weekend and off-hours?
Right, at Salem Health.
Yeah.
Right. So, we have some service there, it's just a matter of communicating that.
That's what I'm thinking, if we can look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, good to see you always.
Thank you.
Well, before we get into consent calendar, I wanted to share with you, maybe, because I can't get through this whole board session without doing this, because it's going to get warm in here. But I, yesterday, I was wondering where you were.
Oh, dear.
Because I was out weed-eating with the juvenile crew, and I wanted you to see what I have that maybe you don't have.
Well, it looks pretty fresh, I don't see a lot of markings.
(laughing) I should have brought my shoes out of the car that are just a mess from weed-eating yesterday, but since Public Works...
He came in the office yesterday, and he was...
I wore this all afternoon.
He was dirty and sweaty and sunburned and whatnot.
Yeah, and I was about ready to collapse, and then I drank...
I told him to take a shower.
I drank two of these with water and had some nuts, and I finally got a little energy, and I worked till about 4:00, and then I went and took a shower, and then did Neighborhood Night Out last night.
Well, it does open up new employment opportunities.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of us thought you should have taken a shower earlier.
Yeah, on a serious note, I did go out with our juvenile crew yesterday, two different work crews, and those young men were, they were all men at this, yesterday, and they did a great job of cleaning, doing skirts and doing the weed-eating out there, blackberry bushes, oh my gosh.
Not an easy day yesterday by any means.
No, and then cleaning up what was left over of homeless camp over in one of our stormwater ditches that I got some pictures of, so. Okay, I guess we better do some business. Your turn.
All right, Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning, and it includes, and from Public Works, we received notice of a hearings officer's decision that approves conditional use case 18017 Green Park Solar LLC on property owned by Joanne and Larry Ross, Clerk's File 5752. We received notice of a hearings officer's decision denying a conditional use case 18025 Jennifer Y. Hofling, trustee of the Jennifer Y. Hofling Revocable Living Trust dated April 18th, 2018. Tax Office, approve an order canceling uncollectible personal property tax accounts in the amount of $27,451.16. Approve a property tax refund in the amount of $51,788.64 to Panasonic Eco Solutions Solar America LLC, tax ID R29389. And another approve of property tax refund in the amount of $209,320 to Panasonic Eco Solutions America, tax ID 349671.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Just a comment, we continue to have Solar Parks, I don't know what the correct name is, approved still based on the old rules, and we'll be settling out the thoughts, rules for the future soon.
Yeah, so those are applications that came in prior to our action that we took a couple, two or three months ago. Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor approving the consent calendar, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our first action item today is to consider approval of an order directing County Council to file a motion to intervene on behalf of Marion County residents into a lawsuit entitled Northwest Environmental Defense Center at All versus U.S. Army Corps Engineers at All. And Legal Counsel Jane Veto is going to share a little bit about this lawsuit.
Chair Cameron, just a little bit of background. In March of this year, the Northwest Environmental Defense Center filed a lawsuit in federal court against the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and they're seeking certain actions against 13 dams on the Willamette River. But in particular, the one that concerns Marion County is that the plaintiffs in that lawsuit are asking the court to order the Army Corps to install a temperature control device in Detroit Dam. The city of Salem has water rights in the north city of the North Saniam River, and in June, the city moved to intervene in that lawsuit, or to join that lawsuit. And they said that if this water temperature control device is installed, it's going to lower the water level, and it's going to impact the quality of the water, so it's going to affect both quantity and the quality of the water, and that's going to negatively impact the residents of Salem. Because Marion County shares similar interests in both quantity and quality of water in North Saniam, and also because the county has an economic interest through recreation in North Saniam, which would be impacted, negatively impacted, if Detroit Lake were drained for an extensive period of time and if the water level was low, the Board directed me to prepare the proposed order that I'm bringing you today, and that order would direct my office to file a motion to intervene in this lawsuit. I note that the county has been working through the NEPA process, and been working, but the concern now is because this lawsuit was filed, that a resolution for Detroit Dam is going to be reached with the parties. If we don't join this lawsuit, we won't have a seat at the table, we won't be part of that resolution, our voice won't be heard. So, today I did bring to you a draft order, and your options are to direct my office to join this lawsuit, to file a motion to intervene, or to not. So, that is for your consideration today.
I just want to make one more comment about the financial or the economic interest, probably even more so is the agricultural industry and the water that they depend on for irrigation. Marion County is the number-one ag-producing, farm gate ag-producing county in the state of Oregon, and we need to help protect that industry and those people as well, so I think that'll be a part of this. Ms. Chairman?
Well, I've got lots, and it's timely. I attended a meeting in Staton last night from Corps of Engineers to talk about their latest, what they're finding as they've been analyzing.
Thank you for doing that.
Different thoughts have come up through the public comment process. Now, we've gotten letters that this kind of sets a trend, individual back to us, although I think we sent a joint letter to them, but anyways, basically saying that we've seen your concerns, and "Don't be." Well, I'm not buying it. So, I attended the meeting, and it started with, I really, I really thought that they would say, "Well, here, you know, we've really looked into this now, and we're settling on something that's more." But it wasn't that at all, it was right from the beginning, "Yeah, we've heard your comments, but we still believe our plan is the best, and that's where we're going, and the next is the environmental impact statement, and you'll get a chance to comment on it," but things are rolling by then and going. Then they wanted to send everybody back at individual stations for fish, water flow, et cetera, and not, it was, it was not to tell about new methods, it's just to start convincing people that, yes, we've looked at it, and this is the best thing. It was a, well, the dog and pony, the cell show. And they weren't even really going to have a public questions, your questions would be answered at the stations. And somebody started talking, and then, I'm not real proud of it, but I got a little bit hot, I can't say it any different, and they said, "Well, can I at least make a statement?" The gist of the statement was that you're, you're not listening, you say you are, but you're not. You're threatening to destroy Marion County cities and farms, and we're not just going to lay there, so you better put into your calculations the delay in time and cost of every injunction." See, I'm getting, as I say it, you get an idea. Every injunction we can think of. And they kind of looked at me like, "What's your problem?" I just, I'm sorry, but I said it, and I mean it, and this is, this is the first of it. This may not be the one that stops them, but everything we can do to make it look. I will say, and you know the project manager's name.
Oh, yeah.
What is it?
Jeff.
Jeff, he's a good guy. Hate to be ripping on...
Yeah, he's the engineering guy that's...
But he's in charge of the project, so he wants the project to happen.
Probably Tim was there, the guy that operates the dams.
He didn't talk, but he was.
Small guy, or, I mean, younger guy.
But anyway, Jeff came to me afterwards and confided that what we've looked at so much different that maybe you didn't hear in our presentation, is they're, they're thinking that they will do the wet build, in the water build, and as far as I'm concerned, they better. That's the one that doesn't affect us. If it costs more and takes longer, I'm sorry, but if you insist on doing this, and he says that they've got it where they will guarantee 750 feet, which is supposed to be enough for Salem and the water districts and everything that Staton draws out at Staton, so he said that's our plan. I said, "Well, if you can do that, then I feel different," but believe me...
They haven't said that, they haven't said that publicly yet.
If that isn't your final conclusion, and then, our senators have to get involved here. They're laying back, and I'm just going to say it out loud too, because I'm thinking of it. They're laying back, and apparently the environmental community thinks this is what it is, but they need to be involved. They can't, this would be a travesty if it went on without focusing in on the one that doesn't, doesn't kill Marion County.
Well, I think the, it goes back to being in the lawsuit, so there's standing, I think the Northwest Environmental Defense Center would rather see it be done in the wet too, because then it's going to be better water for the fish during those years, right?
Yes.
Because if they take it down to 1350...
I don't see anything lives in that river in between.
No, no, so it would be better overall, but it'd be very costly. In fact, I've heard that they don't even know if this has ever been done, because you're talking 300 feet versus, you know, a bridge you're building at 150 feet with divers.
But it isn't really, it's just that at the low level, you get what work you can't base, and then once they're above it, there'd be a pretty good window to be working.
Jane, is there, I read the order, and it doesn't say anything about the agricultural community and economic, is there a way we can put something in there about that?
We can definitely put that in our motion to intervene.
Put that motion, put that in our motion to mention, you know, maybe about us being the number-one ag-producing county, and water is critically important for that economic engine, or something, you're good at that.
Yeah.
So, when you make the motion, can you...
I will. Just one other comment, and that's private conversation with Jeff, well, maybe that was private, but they just didn't expect it to be a problem when they first came forward with it.
Oh, I know.
And he did comment, like, he thinks, "Well, if you can't plant corn one year, will you plant something else, no big deal?" But he does say, "Now, I recognize, you know, the, for example, grapes, or trees, or any perennial plants."
Blueberries.
Oh, don't you mess with the blueberries.
That's right.
But we're at least opening their eyes, but now we've got to force them to make the right call.
Yeah, it's really good timing, thank you for going. I was at Neighborhood Night Out four different places last night, and I think it was great that you were there, so they, because they see me up there a lot, and you were there, and they know we're united on this as a board. But I see Danielle sitting out in the audience, and lots of things are happening along with this, the study of water that we've been doing, the value of water, so there's, this is really good timing to kind of alert everybody. But yeah, that first Staton meeting that Congressman Trader did, and you and I were at it, I remember them saying, they said, "We didn't even think about the downstream impact on this stuff."
No, this is our water, this is our dam, this is how we take care of our problem.
Yeah, well, it's good that we're, we're there.
So, Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve an order directing County Council to file a motion to intervene on behalf of Marion County residents in the lawsuit entitled Northwest Environmental Defense Center at All versus U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and add some language that describes our agriculture situation in Marion County.
Okay, and I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's see where that goes. Thanks, Jane. Next on our list, under Community Services, consider approval of a contract for services with Shelter Buddy in the amount of $103,163 for implementation support and maintenance for an animal management software system that we have been waiting for for a while.
Yes, it's quite a amount.
And Tamara, I need to do a ride-along with the dog people, with the animal control people.
You think you got a new vest for that?
I, yeah, I think, I'll get the bite suit out from the Sheriff's Department.
Well, hopefully you won't need that.
Yeah.
All right, well, good morning, Commissioners. Tamara Getch, Director for Community Services. I'm joined this morning by our staff and co-director Danielle Gonzalez, Marion County Community Services Department.
And Scott Emery from Information Technology.
So, as you indicated at the opening, we are here today to introduce a contract for a new animal management software system, but I also wanted to take this opportunity to use it as a venue to help the public understand what the dog shelter does, and how this service will be a service to them, as well as to us in operations. So, under County Code, Chapter 6.05, Marion County Commissioners have authorized the shelter to be the oversight and control of both the dog control county codes, as well as the operations of the facility. And as part of the operations of the shelter facility, we are, we are charged with doing licensing, providing care and feeding of all stray and lost dogs that come into our care, and then those that end up being, becoming the property of Marion County due to unredeemed animals that come into our care. We then provide alternative services and supports to the community through adoption. We have a huge fostering program that we utilize that helps provide services to the dogs in our care, and get them out of a shelter environment. And then we also work with local rescues. The goal of this contract was really started in October of 2015. I received a call from Information Technology staff member at the time, letting me know that our existing information, or integrated animal management software system, which is called IMES, is what we call it in-house, IMES was experiencing many failures. We were spending a lot of effort, a lot of time and energy on fixing things that were not working, both at the shelter, and then we were also experiencing some constraints because of the type of framework that was being utilized in, with this particular software platform. So, we began looking at that in 2015. We shortly thereafter began to put together a capital improvement project, proposal to the county. For the last couple of years, this has been in our budget to get implemented. The difficulty is, is when you go from an in-house build to an off-the-shelf build, it becomes more difficult, you need to really map out all of the new systems that we may need to have as the project is developed, and looking at how we can use this off-the-shelf build, that we won't have to do all the in-house fixes, but we really be using software packages that exist, have been used in other counties or other areas throughout the state or otherwise, and figure out how we can then support services that our public requires demands from us to provide care and services to them. So, we're, our hope with this new software system is to not only improve our efficiencies with the, with this new off-the-shelf system, which is Shelter Buddy, so we're hoping the Shelter Buddy will then give us some efficiencies that we don't currently have in-house with the operations of IMES. We are doing a lot of alternative practices, I'll say, of tracking information, because IMES does not have the capacity to do some of the things that we are needing and be responsive to the public. We do a lot of spreadsheets, we do a lot of hand counts, we're picking and pulling information. That system alters some of the procedures that we do in the caring of our animals, and so with this new software, we're going to, of course, we'll, we'll need to do some changes to fit our flow to align with the new system. However, we won't have to direct our IT staff to do all of those in-house fixes. I think there was a routine call to IT that was a demand of their time, we know that their time is precious, and we have a lot of other things that we could be utilizing those talents toward, for county business, and this will help us in securing supports for that. I think the big piece for the public is that as we increase our access to dog licensing, which is an important piece of our work, that if we were to, to ensure that everybody who is a dog owner had a license, that would tell the public that we have a huge rabies vaccination, I guess, most dogs and animal, most dogs in Marion County would be licensed and would have the rabies vaccination. And then it also helps us in returning dogs back to the community more successfully. If a dog has a license, they have a longer length of stay at the shelter per our code. Any unredeemed dog that is unlicensed becomes county property and goes into our adoption line after three days. If it's licensed, it's, there's a longer stay. So, those are all the important pieces, rabies, length of stay, reunification to the public. In the past, we haven't been able to do online licensing. This new system is going to allow us to help the public get a license more quickly through the internet. That's our normal way of doing business these days, rather than having that face-to-face inside the shelter, writing a check is becoming less common for people, and so we're really looking for ways to gain efficiencies, improve access, and then make sure that when we have a product, that it comes out of the Shelter Buddy, that it's really serving not only our production needs, but also being able to tell the story of the types of services that we have, and increasing our transparency to the public. So, all of that is to say, we're really excited, it's been a long journey, but I just really want to compliment Danielle and Scott's staff for helping us get here today, that without their dedication to the details of the contract, being committed to making sure that we get to an outcome, we wouldn't be here, we would still be in the process mode. So, I really appreciate that. Danielle, you've been working intimately about, on this contract, can you talk a little bit about that, and what the flow may look like, et cetera?
Yeah, so with this particular contract, we've taken an opportunity to actually look at the process and operations workflows internally and externally. When we first went out for RFP, we actually very specifically put that we are looking for operational efficiencies for the staff, the internal staff, as well as for our customers.
Microphone.
Thank you. Is that better?
Yep, there you go.
Okay, thank you. So, we were looking for those efficiencies that we could have internally, as well as for the constituents that are trying or attempting to comply with state and local laws to license their dog. So, licensing took a very front-and-center approach on this particular animal management software, RFP, that we went through. With that, we ended up with a company that's actually out of Australia, but they are a kind of like a Willamette-Hemaine Society-type organization, so they are intimately involved in the operations side. They have a licensing feature as well, and they have a nice intuitive interface, and so we selected Shelter Buddy as their doing business as, Shelter Buddy, Inc. And so, they put together a very nice plan, they've, we've got some operation, excuse me, some pieces of the project management already in place. Scott's team has been wonderful, because they've been working with us to work on data migration, they've already worked with us on helping to create our workflows of what we have currently, and what we can do in the future to improve those workflows. Really, the big hope for us is, is to get better reports. Right now, we have rudimentary reports that we're able to pull, so there's no, you can only take like one variable at a time, and if you're a nerd like me, you kind of like multiple variables, and so it makes it harder to make decisions, because you're only getting a small portion of the picture. As Tamara said, the workarounds that the current staff are doing, it's multiple, and it's multiple pieces of work, extra pieces of paper that we don't need, and it's really then also going to be shifting the responsibility of responding to these immediate concerns on the IT side, to Shelter Buddy to actually manage that moving forward. So, we're hoping that if we can get this all aligned and together, which very honestly, it's starting to really move in a positive direction. It was a little bumpy at the beginning, and a lot of it's just the learning curve of putting together something like this, where it's a software program, but also you're dealing, it's almost like a case management system, a healthcare record together, it's, you know, shelter operations, it's, you know, cleaning schedules, dog walking schedules, all of these things that you don't think about when you're going for a software program early on. So, we appreciate the dedication of our procurement's office, as well as our IT department, for making sure that we're getting a great product. At this point, I was a little nervous up front, but at this point, the product is really going to suit our needs, and the interfaces, I think, if nothing else, for our, for our customers' perspective, it was going to be a stronger presence for them to comply. So, I want to at least give you that. Welcome to answer any questions as well. Starting to work through the workflow processes of how we have to get through all of these, and so Sarah Brooks and Gary Christopherson's been really, really helpful in getting those done, so thank you very much. And I'm going to pass it to Scott.
Great, I'm just going to follow up on a couple of key points that I think were made, which was operational efficiency. When you actually look at the time invested to keep the existing homegrown system up and running versus actually going to a software product, as we have proposed here today, the annual cost is actually pretty straightforward and pretty much reduced below that of what services we could provide internally. Kind of further to that point is the efficiency that the organization gains. One of the key aspects is not only the easy use for the citizens to go online and interact with the system, but it's for the field operations. When they're in the field, when they're out in the kennels, no longer do you have to run back and forth to a terminal to try to update information, pretty critical for that operation on that side of the business. It also integrates in with our existing teller point-of-sale system, which is what we just converted all the other departments towards, so again, a lot of synergy. So again, a lot of synergies. And then kind of finally, that whole notion in around the entire mobile area that actually works for both the citizens as well as the staff internally. What we've seen here is when we assess projects, we're trying to look at the amount of risk we have. We looked at the data. First off, the data is not sensitive, so it's not like our healthcare really, because the information isn't scrubbed, it doesn't have anything there that's sensitive. So as far as safeguards go, we can actually kind of lower down our barriers. With respect to actual data migration, most of the work has already been done by the Marion County staff in actually mapping the data. So we've already ahead of the game. I mean, this is pretty unusual for projects of this nature. And then probably the final point is, again, that notion of, once you deploy it, we have to use it. And because this is so intuitive, it's easy again for the citizens as well as for staff. So I think right across the board, this is a pretty low-risk project for us, a very short-cycle project, as a matter of fact, compared to some that may be nine-plus months long. This will be very short.
So a couple of comments. If you tested on the commissioner, then, and he could use it, then you know anybody could use it.
Absolutely. That is one of our benchmarks.
You are our dog expert.
Right. The dog dummies. One of the questions, on a serious note, Tamara, we've been talking about vet offices and their role in trying to help us get registered. Would this be something that they could easily, if, would it be easier for them? They wouldn't have to take the cash and all that. They could just take the person's credit card or have them do it right there at the veterinarian's office? Is this something we've looked at from a standpoint of extension?
So, you know, until we get into the ins and outs of the operations of the software system, some of those details aren't completely known. But as I look at the option for access, what we can easily do is have instructions at those veterinarian sites and be able to give the customer, the end user, access. Most of us have our cellphones with us all the time. They can go right online and make those direct licensing happen. With the, our desire is for that to happen in the field, in the communities, in the community homes and in vet offices. We will be looking at, because they're a huge partner with us, and we're looking at how we can continue their support in helping us increase our licensing and make the ease to the customer. So I don't have a, like, concrete how that will work, but that is definitely on the list of things that we need to address as we implement.
So is there a flip phone app? I mean, excuse me. Is there, is, can I do it? So there is an application or there?
Yes.
It's going to work on a smartphone?
Yes.
So if I'm standing, okay, great, okay.
I don't like where you're going, by the way.
And I was going to add, the veterinary partners are extraordinarily important. They provide about 27% of the dog licensing for the county. And so we want to keep those partnerships strong because it's very difficult to reach the people once they leave the veterinary office. And it's very problematic if a person leaves the veterinary office, promptly loses their rabies certificate, and then they can't get their license in time. So we're trying to get them, we're going to do everything possible to make sure the veterinary offices have the resources that they need to be able to quickly respond to a request for a veterinary license. The one thing I will say is we have to take a cautious approach with the veterinary offices because some of them are not as technologically savvy, and they would prefer not to be. So some of them are like that. Some want to provide the service online, so just to kind of put that out there for you guys.
I hear you. So I have a question. And you were, Danielle, you were getting at it, and Scott, you were, you were showing the flow chart of what has to be done. Just talk to me a little bit about when you would do this, how long it takes, training. This is going to be a big process, shutdown of a system for a while, or just slip right in?
So the overall timeline is actually forecasted out six months. We don't think it's going to take that long based on what we've seen. It does include the transition in-user training. That was actually part of what we purchased, certainly all the migration of existing data. We will have to run the two systems for a little period of time. Usually try to get through one cycle, usually like on a month boundary, just to make sure that everything's clear. It will be, of course, painful for the staff because one will be very easy to use, the other one not so much. But yes, all those benchmarks are in place. Again, because we've done a lot of this pre-work, especially the mapping and how we're going to move the data over, chances are it's only going to be a short couple of months to get this up and going.
Good. I know you've talked about it a long time, fully supportive. I just want to know what I'll be hearing.
Pretty low risk.
So Chair Cameron, I would make a motion that we do approve the contract for services with Shelter Buddy in the amount of $103,163 for implementation, support, maintenance of an animal management software system.
That can be used on flip phones. Right. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Do you want me to call you on it? It works for what I want. No.
He's not even going to be able to get you this fishing license on his flip phone next year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Commissioners, thank you for your support. You as well, John.
Great. And I see Cameron was here. Thank you for contracts, for the people that are behind the scenes making all this stuff happen. Appreciate your service, too. All right. So next item on, for action is under Public Works, consider approval of a public improvement agreement in the amount of $177,040 with Brown Contracting, Inc., for the North Marion County Transfer Station Concrete Floor Repair. Brian.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brian May, Public Works, Environmental Services Division. And as mentioned in the introduction, here today to talk about a repair that we're having at our North Marion Transfer Station. Our facilities are starting to show some of their age, and also just the high use and the volume that we've been seeing. North Marion Transfer Station has seen double-digit growth over the last two years of over 20%. So again, that's just additional wear and tear that we're seeing out there. This contract is actually in a second go-around. We originally bid this in March, received two bids, and one was in excess of $240,000 of our budget. The other bid did not provide the proper documentation for experience, so it kind of forced us to relook and reevaluate the project. So we re-engineered it, put in a scope that was probably half of what we originally looked at. And part of that was a focus at the high-impact areas from what we've been working on. So if you go to our transfer station, everybody jumps their material into a roll-off box, a 40-yard box, and those are required to be pulled in, pulled out by our equipment. As part of that concrete floor, there's expansion cracks, and the wear and tear of just the metal wheels impacting those has just wallowed them out and created these almost ditches within our transfer station floor. We're starting to see excessive damage to the contractors' boxes where we're tearing wheels off and damaging what they call the doghouse, where we actually connect to the box. So that's the intent, is to get this repair taken care of, to address, you know, kind of the customer service aspect of moving material in and out, and then also not to impact our contractor with the impact there. So we rebid this project. Bids we received, the June 12th, Brown Contracting, an amount of $177,040, and American Restore came in at $245,638.21. The bid was approved, and then we had no protests based on that situation. So as we're looking to move forward, do want to make sure I note that this is probably one of more to come as far as repairs we'll be doing at this facility amongst our others, where we're just seeing the age of them and needing to do some improvement projects. So from a financial impact, we've updated an improvement project proposal that'll be set forward with the updated to our 2018-19 budget in a supplemental.
Okay.
From a customer service standpoint, again, anytime we're doing work at a transfer station, we're concerned about impacts in allowing people access. We'll continue to have the access Monday through Saturday as we have throughout. We're going to do a temporary relocate of that area underneath what we call Building Four, which is a covered facility, to make sure that we address stormwater issues or any leachate generation that could happen. So it'll be, I won't say seamless to our customers, but we'll still be able to move forward and get the job done. Looking at about an eight-day maximum for this project.
Questions?
I talked to Brian before the meeting, said I'd have a question, but he's answered them. I understand just what you're doing and what you have to do there, so. And then, and pretty familiar with the enterprise. So I would make a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Latimer.
Thank you so much. Brian, could you explain to the folks watching on TV the purpose of the transfer station and some of the changes you made in our process of moving stuff through the transfer station?
You bet, definitely. So our transfer stations are a critical piece of our infrastructure, you know, of our integrated solid waste system. It allows our customers, you know, in a geographic location, to have a kind of easy access for their disposal and recycling opportunities. The North Marion Facility does just that, kind of services that northern county portion for us. It's critical in nature that we try to do and handle the material in the best way, I guess is a way of saying that, that as our incinerator fills to capacity, or is actually now overcapacity, we're looking for new ways to process material to get as much recovery as possible. So just this year, for our North Marion Transfer Station, that material's being directed to the Marion Resource Recovery Facility off Brookslake Road, where it is now being processed, we're recovering wood, metal, cardboard, and any other commodities that have some value to avoid putting more material into the incinerator. We've been already doing this with material out of skirts and showing a good impact. We're seeing recovery rates probably of 20% to 30% on that material, because you think of that when you clean out your garage, whatever, what you're really throwing away is stuff that we can usually get through and recover some material from. So the anticipation is less impact to the incinerator to make sure that we continue to see what I call the garbage, you know, the curb-side collected material going there with the volume we need it to, and then moving that other material where we can actually gain some resources and recovery out of it to a similar facility as the Marion Resource Recovery Facility.
Yeah. Touring the facility, the recovery facility there on Brookslake Road, it was interesting to take that wood, the chipper, and then I get, I think it's Ferris, takes it up, and they use it to generate electricity at their CoGen plant up in the canyon. So there's a lot of, a lot of good things people don't realize that are coming out of all that work that goes on. You also mentioned, Brian, that this is one of many to probably come, you know, and I think I said this at the beginning of the meeting, I was out at skirts, the transfer station here out of, off of Highway 22 yesterday, and do we have an extension or widening of that road on a list so that people could bypass the line that's going into the actual dump area to get into the recycle area?
We are working with Republic Services to try to improve the access to that facility. I think a lot of us have experienced delivering material on a Saturday or Sunday.
Right.
Those are our peak times. We have had wait times in line of excess of an hour.
Right.
So we're trying to set up the entrance to get a third lane either to a direct recycle or something that allows some additional benefit for our customers. We're staffed in a manner that all three scale houses are full, definitely during our peaks, to try to help with traffic. We're even looking at some of the materials that are currently being delivered to skirts. So we may deliver to one of our other facilities that doesn't have the capacity issue to just try to alleviate that burden. But those are some pretty big switches, but we're evaluating those right now.
Yeah, I was just thinking, a recycle lane only would really help some efficiencies out there.
Definitely. And then in addition, having the household hazardous waste facility just adds a whole other movement of traffic and access egress on the site. It's a, it's a really small site with a lot of material being put in and taken out of it.
I did see traffic, you, just, I don't know what day it was, clear back onto Highway 22, and of course, that's not a happy situation ever.
No. No, we're seeing that impact even stretching to the weekdays, where we're seeing those volumes continue to be high.
Yeah, I sat out there, what time we open, eight, right?
Yes.
Eight. Yeah, I think it was a Saturday morning, I got there at 7:30, and I was the third guy in line. I sat there for 20 minutes because I didn't want to get stuck in a long line.
Yeah. Part of our education outreach is to push people to our North Marion Facility. It is not yet at capacity, so we do have room there. If people are up for a little more of a, a little longer drive out to the country, we do have access there.
Wanted to explain to folks where the North Marion Facility is while you have that opportunity.
So if anybody heads up towards Woodburn, towards the outlet malls, or continues up I-5, and the waste station, you'll see kind of the hills on the west side of the interstate.
Frankie Mountain.
And that's our North Marion Transfer Station. It's definitely at the north end of the county.
What exit do they get off of? Do you know?
I take the Woodburn exit.
Yeah.
Crosby Road.
Okay. Can you get off at Crosby Road?
I don't know, actually. I think there's another way around, you'd have to, to hit Crosby to then get into the site. So Woodburn exit.
Or Boone's Ferry, or.
Yeah.
The Front Edge Road.
All kinds of neat things up there that you can visit while you're at that transfer station. You can see the ash piles, you can see the leche, or leche, or whatever.
Leche, yeah.
Leche, yeah. All kinds of things. Okay. You ready?
Well, it seems like you'd rather talk, but I'm ready to make a motion. So Chair Cameron, I'd move, we do approve a public improvement agreement in the amount of $177,040 for Brown Contracting Incorporated for the Marion County Transfer Station Concrete Floor Repair. Now, does that include the other one with America Restore, Brian, or?
No. That'll just be Brown.
So what happens with the other one?
Brown was just the second bidder, so they were the higher bidder of the two.
I get you.
All right. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Brian, thank you for your leadership in this area. I know it's been a challenge, and will continue to be a challenge, but the creativity you're bringing and the leadership you're bringing is really, really appreciated, so thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. That concludes, I think, our action items today. And I will read the calendar for upcoming events. Let's see, tomorrow, on the ninth, at 9:30, we have our, no, that's not 9:30, should be 7:30. That's what, it's on my calendar. Says 9:30. We just checked the website and make sure it's 7:30. Should be 7:30 tomorrow. Kaiser Marion County Meeting at Sherry's Restaurant at 4998 River Road North in Kaiser. Tomorrow at 9:30, ninth, Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer Meeting and Executive Session if needed pursuant to ORS 192.6602 ABDFHI, here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Also tomorrow, Thursday, the ninth, from, at 3 o'clock, we're going to dedicate the juvenile, the new juvenile courtroom and ribbon-cutting at the Marion County Juvenile Court at 2970 Center Street, Northeast Salem. Monday, the 13th, at 8:00 a.m., Association of Oregon County's Board Retreat, location The Resort at the Mountain, and that's up at 6801 East Fairway Avenue in Welch's. Tuesday on the 14th, 7:30 a.m., State and Marion County Meeting, location is at the Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third Avenue in State. Also on Tuesday, the 14th, 9:00 a.m., here, calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Also Tuesday, the 14th, 9:30, work session on Open Access at Courthouse Athletic Club, Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Tuesday, the 14th, at 4:00 p.m., Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, and we're going to be touring the Marion County Jail and the new operations facility out at 4,000 Omsville Highway. On Wednesday, the 15th, we're back here for our board session at 9:00 a.m. On Wednesday, the 15th, we're at 12:30 for Job Council Meeting in the Wellam and Workforce Partnership Boardroom at 626 High Street in Salem, Oregon. Speaking of that work session, at my workout this morning, the owner of the courthouse said that they're going to, he's got $5,000 to remove hedges over there because there's a homeless camp. a homeless camp that sheriff keeps helping them with, but people keep coming back. So interesting to hear what that, what that's all about when we have that work session. What else is interesting, Commissioner?
Well, you went to four night-out events, you said, yesterday. I was planning on going to Sublimi, but frankly, when I got done with Stateon, I didn't feel like being happy. So I just went home. But anything interesting?
Yeah. I want to say, I was telling John this this morning, I went to Wood Park Terrace. Remember, we toured that during the remodel a couple of years ago? The place looked great. The Candace had organized, and she had all her staff there. They were all in their black t-shirts with Marion County Housing Authority on them. People were having fun. The kids, they had face painting. They had somebody from the library there. They had these two guys on the barbecue, this big, huge grill that were just flaming up, sweating, right? You know, I could relate, because I did that for my grandson. It was really, really well-done. And Candace, that was very complimentary to her. It was great to see that. She's wanting to do that at some other places, maybe, like even out in, I told her you were going to Stateon, and she says, yeah, maybe we should do some out there. She's bringing some really great leadership to the Housing Authority. I was really proud of what was happening. Then I went to Shemeckada, where we had the, the sheriff had organized one there. It was in the middle of the campus, and it was just popping. It was happening. And there was just lots of people there. They didn't have the same big barbecue. They had a little barbecue, so I don't know that you and I, I didn't have food there. I had a hot dog in Wood Park Terrace, but they were kind of behind on the food issue there. But they had lots of, they had our CERT teams, emergency management teams, the sheriff was there, neighborhood association. Then I went down to the Four Corners one, which is in the park that, before I got here, I guess you had.
Santana.
Santana Park. The park looked really good, met some people that run the park. They're struggling with finances, talked about that, you know, because they want to improve the basketball courts. Again, we had our CERT teams there, Sheriff's Department was there. They had food vendors there. It was really, really well-done. And then I went down to Viewcrest, the one that they always ask me to come every year. And I got there just after the sheriff left, and there was about eight, 10 people there at the end. And they always want me to give a speech. And by that time, I go, I don't know, I'm not, I just answer any questions you want. We just talked about stuff. So, yeah, it was good. And I'm thankful, I'm thankful you went to that, that meeting.
I'm taking back to Candace, and I'm really happy with the job she's doing, too. And then getting out at functions like that to make herself available to clients that wouldn't have that opportunity, show some involvement and caring. She's doing a great job.
Yeah. It was really, I mean, you would, you would have loved the food. They had burgers and dogs. And then inside, and they were smart, they kept it inside where it was cool and shady, in the little, what is that called? The little center there, right, where they can meet. And they had, they had chopped onions, jalapenos. I put this on my hot dog. Jalapenos. They had pepper jack and cheddar cheese on my hot dog, and mustard. And they had bottled water. It was nice and cold.
Mr. Chair.
Chair recognizes Mr. Latimer.
Thank you for that recognition. I think we are supremely lucky to have Candace. I mean, not only is she well-organized, but she's thoughtful. And what she is doing for housing in Marion County is phenomenal, something we haven't seen in years. And I really appreciate the fact that we've got Candace running our Housing Authority. She's so good.
I was signing 8/18. 18. That's 8/8. So, John, I recognized, yeah, I know what month it is. It's just I got the wrong date. I recognized your wrist this morning. Yeah. You know, we had our department head meeting the other day, and passed out that hands and words are not for hurting, and.
It's easier for me to wear it.
Than to do it?
Because I don't wear long-sleeve shirts.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say it's easier for you to wear it than be nice to people.
Right.
No, I will not do that.
You better close this up.
All right.
There's a degradation happening.
All right. So what else? Anything else happen this week that we need to talk about? Okay. There's a lot that happened, but we'll go, we'll go ahead and adjourn. We are adjourned.